Good evening. I am calling the meeting to order and I will have to recess until... You want to say something before I do?
I was just gonna say we are currently not at a quorum, so...
I have to recess until we get one more person. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission are appointed by the City Council and the County Board of Commissioners to make recommendations to the elected officials. We emphasize that the elected officials have the final say on any issue before us tonight. While this meeting is being conducted in person, it is also accessible using the Zoom virtual meeting platform. In the virtual meeting platform, public participants do not have the ability to talk or be seen on video by default. In order to maintain meeting decorum and a discernible record of the meeting, the chat function has been disabled. For those attending in person, if you plan to speak on an agenda item tonight, please go to the table to my left and sign up to speak. When speaking, please state your name and your address clearly as you come to the podium, and please speak into the microphone directly. If you are attending the meeting virtually, you will be given the ability to speak at the appropriate time. If you have pre-registered, your name will be called so you can make your comments just like any in-person public hearing. You may also call in during the meeting by dialing 1-301-715-8592. If you call in during the meeting, you will need to wait until the particular public hearing you are interested in starts. After all of the pre-registered speakers have shared their comments, I will ask if there's anyone else wishing to speak. At that point, you will need to digitally raise your hand by pressing *9 on your phone, and when recognized, state your name and address before making your comments. Each speaker tonight has... I'm sorry. Each applicant has a total of 10 minutes for a presentation. Each speaker tonight has two minutes to speak after the applicant has presented. Commissioners, let's still... We don't have a lot of cases, but let's still be respectful of time tonight. So let's still try to keep our comments to five minutes for Q and A. And again, you will be called on only a second time to speak after all the other commissioners have chosen to speak for a first time. Remember to please have your thoughts and questions organized. Commissioners, as a reminder, after the public hearing is closed, you obtain the floor by being recognized by the chair. Commission members, please remember you share this time with your fellow commissioners, keep your comments, questions pithy, and please don't repeat topics that have already been discussed or questioned. The time to make all public statements is before a motion is made. Once a motion is on the floor, any further discussion regarding that motion must come after a second. All motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Commissioners, if you are not ready to move a case forward, please indicate as such when questioned. Finally, I ask that everyone here and on the Zoom, commission members, staff, and the public, to conduct themselves in a courteous and respectful manner. If someone fails to act in that manner, the chair will ask the offending person or persons to leave the room or be placed on mute on the Zoom until such time they regain personal control. If decorum fails to be restored, the chair will recess the meeting until a genuine commitment to act respectful and courteous is observed. After the case you're here for ends, please be courteous and leave this room quietly, waiting to talk until after you have exited those glass doors behind us for your post-case discussions as the commission continues its remaining business on the agenda. Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Chair Cameron.
Here.
Vice Chair Shigeris.
Here.
Commissioner Capers.
Here.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Wen.
Here.
Commissioner Kopac.
Here.
Commissioner McIver.
Commissioner Neinkirchner.
Here.
Commissioner Piantek.
Commissioner Williams.
Commissioner Woke.
Here.
We have achieved a quorum, and just so that everybody is aware, Commissioners Cutright and Gregory have submitted their resignations from the commission and will not be participating further.
So that means our motioner is not here. Matt, is that gonna be you from now on?
Sorry, what was that?
I said Commissioner Cutright is not here. He resigned?
Yep.
And, I'm sorry, can we wait just a few minutes to finish the... A few seconds, I think, to finish the roll call?
I'm sorry.
Somebody's...
Yes.
Here.
There we go.
Is this Ms. McIver's last meeting, too?
Is it? Did you reapply?
I did not.
Okay, so this is Ms. Commissioner McIver's last meeting.
All right. We have established a quorum. There are no adjustments to the agenda. Next up on item number four, we have the approval of the minutes and consistency statements from the May 13, 2025 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion. It's obeyed.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes and consistency statements. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number five on the agenda, public hearings, zoning map changes. Case number Z240024, Durham Gateway at Briar Creek. May we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Cameron. As you stated, this is case Z2400024, Durham Gateway at Briar Creek. This proposal is located east of Leesville Road and north of US 70, is on both sides of the Durham-Wake County line. The site is a little over 300 acres, and the proposal is to split-zone the site between PDR 10.649 and industrial light with a development plan. The proposal is for up to 1,750 dwelling units, at least 175 of which would be income-restricted, with up to 150,000 square feet of non-residential uses within that PDR district. An additional 1,280,000 square feet of light industrial development would be within the IL district. The proposed zoning is consistent with the place-type designations of mixed-use neighborhood and recreation and open space due to the preservation of environmentally sensitive lands as represented by the ROS designation and the combination of uses on the site. The existing zoning is residential rural, commercial general, and industrial light in Durham County, and residential four in Wake County. The site is surrounded by residential zoning on the Durham County side, except for some light industrial and commercial zoning along US 70. Raleigh zoning in Wake County across US 70 is a mix of residential and office. The aerial map shows the general location of the project and shows the primarily residential uses to the northeast. Briar Creek is southeast to the site. The property is currently designated mixed-use neighborhood on the place-type map. The proposed zoning is determined consistent with the designated place-type. The applicant has included graphic and text commitments. Highlights are shown here for the PDR section of the site, including limitations on impervious surface, inclusion of an income-restricted housing, stormwater and open-space commitments, including for the Briar Creek Trail, planting of native species, and a contribution to Durham Public Schools. In the IL portion of the site, in addition to commitments regarding impervious surface, stormwater, and native species, a minimum 12% tree coverage is committed. As shown on the development plan, the site is bifurcated by a north-south arterial, which is to become the Northern Durham Parkway with an interchange at US 70. The IL portion of the site is west of this road, the PDR section to the east. Stream buffers are shown as required by the UDO. Neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with the Neighborhood Meeting Guidelines on May 15, 2024, and May 1, 2025, with 83 attendees in the first meeting and 50 in the second. No comments have been submitted to the Durham Rezoning Explorer in relation to this case. The proposal is consistent with the place-type map designation of mixed-use neighborhood. The proposal is consistent with 24 of 28 applicable comprehensive plan policies. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. May we have the applicant, please?
Good evening, Chair Cameron and members of the commission. I'm Jamie Schwadler with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of the applicant's Beacon Partners and HM Partners. I'm also joined by my colleague Marie Farmer, as well as our engineers from Kimley Horn, who are available to answer traffic and technical questions. Our team is proud to present this very unique master-planned mixed-use project strategically located on Highway 70 near Briar Creek that will integrate residential, commercial, and industrial life science uses. The proposal will become a regional neighborhood and employment center, delivering housing and jobs, and providing significant infrastructure and roads. It will also incorporate innovative GSI, public open space, and the opportunity for up to 175 affordable units, which is 10% of our requested density. We'd also like to take the time to appreciate the participation of the community in not only the prescribed meetings, but all the additional meetings that we had, that include Preserve Earl Durham, the Fendel Farms HOA, the Leesville Road Coalition, then Carolina Arbors HOA, and DHIC. This 310-acre assemblage is shown on the map, seeing in the red area, and you can see that we're surrounded by existing development. The residential development of Carolina Arbors is just to our northeast. RTP is to our southwest. Briar Creek Country Club is further to the south, and then, of course, RDU International Airport is just further to our south. So we're surrounded by a good deal of development already, and trying to bring this mixed-use neighborhood and employment center in an area where infrastructure exists but is also planned and committed by this project. That makes this project ideal for annexation. It's compliant with the inter-local annexation agreement between the City of Durham and City of Raleigh, and it's also consistent with Policy 165 of the Comprehensive Plan because it will be contiguous with existing city limits and fill in a donut hole that exists today. And while the current zoning is rather low-density in both Wake and Durham, the place-type map here envisions a much more intense use, and we're set to deliver that with our proposed rezoning. So our designation is mostly mixed-use neighborhood, which describes neighborhoods built on large vacant sites within developed areas, as we just saw on the screen, that include commercial and other non-residential uses, all within a 15-minute walk of the residences. Design should include a mixture of housing types at high density with a variety of heights and price points and green space integrated throughout. And we've taken that guidance and built upon it to create a unique split-zone request because there isn't a current zoning district within the code that would accomplish all of the goals of the place-type map on this particular site. And so to do that, we've split the site into two districts, the proposed IL district in green to the left of the screen, in the west of the site, and the proposed PDR district in blue on the east or to the screen right. And you can see that that is actually adjacent to those existing types of uses. Along 70, you have that existing industrial and commercial uses along the highway corridor, and then, of course, the Carolina Arbors is an existing residential use to the top right of the screen, adjacent to the PDR. So I'll highlight the key commitments here because they're significant. They contribute to Durham's employment, housing, and infrastructure needs, and I'll highlight those in order. So for the key IL commitments, the industrial light, we're providing a regional employment center because we have a maximum of 1.2 million square feet of research and development, office, warehousing, et cetera, uses, with supporting restaurant and retail uses. So we not only are providing the jobs, but the service, retail, and eateries for folks to visit while they're working there. We're also providing some innovative green stormwater infrastructure. At least two GSI measures are incorporated as commitments in the IL district. Those are included in examples on the screen, and we'll also be committing to educational signage that will be supplied there so that folks can understand how that GSI works. In addition to that, we have six design commitments that are committed to quality design so that we're taking these research and development and office buildings and making sure we're enforcing architectural compatibility throughout. Oops. The additional IL district commitments are significant. I'll just highlight a few of those here. We've included several prohibited uses. It wouldn't be consistent with the IL district and the quality that we're trying to deliver here. The minimum 12% of tree coverage, all new trees to be native, a minimum of two acres of open space within the IL district, clustered at that 5,500, to be contiguous. That's important because it's in both types of districts. Post-development runoff treated to the 25-year storm, and stormwater control measures not within any stream buffer. With respect to housing and contributing to housing supply, we're providing that housing directly adjacent to the new jobs that we're creating with up to 1,750 dwelling units with a minimum of two different housing types. We're also including, with that, housing supply affordability. So we've reserved seven acres designated for up to 175 income-restricted dwelling units at 80% AMI for 30 years. Because this is a large site, we felt the dedication of that land for those significant amount of 10% of our density to be delivered by others was the right measure here. It's not every project that can offer that amount of land, but this one can, and we thought that was a significant way to meet the Durham's housing needs, but also affordability. We're also providing neighborhood commercial with up to 150,000 square feet of non-residential, limited to pods two and three by the new Parkway. Those are in orange and blue on your screen, so they're adjacent to where those existing commercials could be. And then providing appropriate scale and clustering with pods four and one at a lower height, a 45-foot height, with the commercial being up to 85-foot height. So we're scaling down as we get closer to the existing neighborhoods and the edge of the site. The PDR district has a tremendous amount of commitments, and it's all of the commitments that you've come to know and want and see in cases just like this. But we are providing a mixture of those types of dwelling units, including the ability to do apartments, townhomes, and detached rowhouses in addition to single-family, so a great mixture. A minimum of three amenities that you see on the screen. Again, that two acres of committed open space with the clustering. We're limiting our impervious to 70%, treating to the 25-year storm. And again, we have the SEM measures and recreational open space, not within any tree buffers, planting new trees to be native, and providing for Briar Creek West Trail to be provided in a variety of ways to be determined at-site plan. In addition to all of that, a $50,000 contribution to Durham Public Schools. In addition to all of the jobs and housing and benefits that I've just described, there's significant transportation commitments that will only be delivered with this case. Absent this case, these would become projects that would have to be funded through taxpayer resources or by DOT. So we're committing to installing a traffic signal for Leesville Road and the future Northern Durham Parkway. We're constructing the Northern Durham Parkway through the site. We're constructing the Leesville Road realignment with 10-foot shared paths through the site, the ACC Boulevard extension with 10-foot shared paths, as well as significant dedication of right-of-way along the routes that you see there, along Route 70 to accommodate the NC DOT project that's scheduled there, and along the significant corridors that we're building through the site, the Durham Parkway extension, the Leesville Road realignment, the ACC Boulevard extension. At the request of the community, we're also installing an overhead street name sign for the Leesville Road at its intersection with US 70. And these show that those significant proposed future networks and how those would go east to west and north-south across the site, providing not only major infrastructure offset of cost, but also connectivity that simply doesn't exist today and be an alternative to 70 as it develops with the projects that NCUD has in mind. So you can see here that not only the housing supply is significant, the employment is creating new jobs to the tune of 2,500 jobs upon completion and 1,800 during the construction of the life cycle of this project. And that infrastructure I mentioned is not only significant graphically, it's significant financially. We're providing a commitment that would be close to 40 million in privately funded in public road and utility infrastructure to contribute to Durham's long-range plan for these utilities and infrastructure along this route. And on top of all of that, we're projecting that there's revenue for the city to the tune of 15 million in annual property tax revenue upon stabilization. So a full build-out, providing jobs, housing, the major infrastructure, and providing a positive revenue. Erin did a great job of summarizing the Comprehensive Plan consistency. We're consistent with 24 of the 28 applicable policies, and most significantly, the place-type review, which has become so important to this commission and the council in delivering that mix of uses. We're also consistent with the UDO and the review criteria. We're placed adjacent to existing uses. We're providing a balance of uses that doesn't exist today, and we're meeting a specific demand in Durham in terms of jobs, employment center, housing, affordable housing, and adequate infrastructure that we're adding that is also available in close proximity to the site. Our team is proud to present this project and will remain available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So Pam, and Tina, and Tammy, all y'all are going together? Okay, you just wanna... And Wanda as well? James as well? Or no? James Stewart?
Yes.
But not going with you all? Okay.
Erin wants to say something.
Erin, yes, I'm sorry.
If I could, really fast, before you start the public hearing, just for the record, I would like to state that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law, and affidavits of all notices are in file in the Planning Department. Thank you. Which ones are?
Thank you very much. Hi, I'm Wanda Allen. My address is on record. Tammy? What I'm gonna... I want you guys to look at this slide tonight, and you can clearly see that southeast Durham is in a crisis. This one project has 24 creeks, which is broken down on this slide. There are six ponds. There are sediment control problems with this project. The project offers a minimum of open space. It has threatened and endangered species. It also adds 22,700 vehicles per day. Traffic is already at a standstill, and many of the developments have not begun. Infrastructure is not in place. We have documentation that the EMS shortage in staff, plus equipment, fire, fire and rescue, we're putting our firefighters and citizens' lives at risk. Police are understaffed. Crime rate continues to rise, plus putting staff and citizens' lives at risk. The schools are overstaffed, overburdened. So tonight, each person that speaks will present facts that support southeast Durham is in a crisis. As you continue to vote yes to the development, you are endorsing the crisis. This slide right here just briefly shows that the current zoning plus is not high-density, plus the new UDO zoning is not high-density. This is just a reminder, when we spoke at one of the other hearings, one of the developers proffered that he would pay for any damage that occurred during blasting. That is not... You cannot do that. The developer can proffer, they will not blast. Thank you.
My name is Pamela Andrews. I live on Wake Forest Highway. Good evening, Planning Commission. We are appreciative of the community meetings on this large parcel and the developer. We do appreciate those very much. However, sediment pollution continues to be a real problem in the 32 developments in this area of southeast Durham. Mass grading, clearcutting, blasting is causing sediment pollution in our streams, our wetlands, and lakes, which is a violation of the Clean Water Act/Control Act of 1972. This site is comprised of, as Wanda said, 24 streams, over five acres of wetlands, floodplains, utility lines. 30% of the Comprehensive Plan policies used to measure these developments are given as they are stamped with a statement, "This will be met at the site plan." Eight policies of the 26 are guaranteed to be met at site plan, require no revisions of the developer at this point. 15% of the plan policies identified by the planning are not met. We are requesting a 100-year stormwater sediment pond for construction and final stormwater basin. A 25-year pond is not sufficient for a parcel this size in triassic basin soil. Next. I reached out several weeks ago to ask for environmental documents from the team. There was not one available on the threatened and endangered species at the time. The stream designation and pond locations were given, but no species information was shared. This is concerning for a site this large. When will this threatened and endangered species be determined, or will it matter? The chart, which is on this slide, is a list of Durham and Wake Counties federally protected species. The dwarf wedge musle, the smooth comb flower, the north long-eared bat, the red concaded webpecker, the michal sumac. North Carolina Environmental Letter shows that there are 24 stream sites flowing on the impaired Little Briar Creek, four perennial, 12 intermittent, and eight that are ephemeral, along with six ponds. We are against again requesting 100-foot storm buffer for perennial streams. We also request undisturbed streams and wetland buffers. This is a large site, and it could do a lot of damage to our environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Pam Williams, and I want to thank you all for your time and that y'all give to us to make these decisions. I can't imagine. And I also want to thank the engineers for all the time they've given us. Oops. Okay. I just want to point out that the sidewalks on Leesville Road will not be contiguous and that there's no commitment to build the Briar Creek Trail. We are requesting that this trail to be built with this project, and otherwise, it will never provide any connectivity in the area. Dell Webb did an excellent example of building trails all through their development, which this is right next to. So we are asking this to be... Concerns that we have is traffic congestion, just not about this project, but all the projects in southeast Durham. As you can see, US 70 is overcapacity. Now, this is normal, and this is not just at 5 to 6. This starts early. NC 98 is also overcapacity, and it causes continuous backup, and people in southeast Durham, how do we get out of here? We can't because all our roads are backed up at 3:30, 3 o'clock to 6:00, 6:30. Traffic volumes and capacity, well, US 70 is just overcapacity. I'm not disputing the TIA or anything that was done in there. The changes that they're gonna do puts a Band-Aid on the issue. The annual daily traffic in 2023 for DOT for US 70 is 41,000. At the build-out in 2030, this is going to add 22,000, 63,000 vehicles per day in this area. And this does not even include 26 developments under construction or built out since 2023. US 70's capacity has increased by 30% from 2021 to 2023. The 32 developments that's been approved were at 8,840 dwellings and over 75,000 additional traffic. This is the area down in the low right-hand corner that I'm talking about. It's just a small area. These are the developments in the area. And again, the 75,000 does not even include Gateway or the Courtyard.
Thank you.
Hey, finished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Tammy Swaye on Baptist Road. I want to just talk about some facts when you make your decision, and I'm going to talk about infrastructure. Through safety practices, you're supposed to have two in, two out on all fire calls. The trends, as you can see here for Station 8 and 17, that would service Gateway, their response time has been getting higher. We have talked to firemen, and 99% of the time, they only ride three. I want to hone in on this recent article where there was 26 firefighters that had to respond to this incident. If you've got three riding, then that's nine stations responding with two ladder trucks. Station 8 does not have a ladder truck. Station 17 does, and Bethesda does, but Station 8 does not. And I also want to point out, you've got two charter schools that are opening up, one in Kemp Road and one on Glen. So you need to keep this in mind, because we don't have a fire department in the southeast Durham that we were promised. They do have 35 people in the fire station or fire training program, but typically that kind of dwindles down, and they're anticipating 50 people that are slated to retire next year. So you need to think about the fire response. Think about infrastructure. One thing, another article, Durham EMS, they said that we have call volumes that increased over 24%. So that's a big increase. We know that when Durham emergencies, when other counties respond, their response time is not included in Durham's response time. And I also want to point out, lastly, that the only police station is 13 minutes, almost seven miles away from Gateway. So you've got to think about that response time when you talk about infrastructure. So think about all of this. We've just got so much, and we keep adding more and more. And the safety of our citizens should come first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Donna Steinbach. I'm a lifelong resident of Durham County, southeast Durham County, and so is most of my family. Just carry on one thing she was talking about with the medical is, last year, my son had cancer, and he had a critical reaction to the chemotherapy. So we called, his oncologist was on the phone with him, trying to get from our 911 what they could do with the ambulance and the emergency room. They said it would take 46 minutes, and I lived like 15 minutes from Durham, 46 minutes before they could get him to emergency. And then when he was asked in about how were they prepared, they weren't prepared to handle an emergency like this. So then he got my husband on the phone and said, "Drive him. Get him here as quickly as possible, but drive him, because you know, the chances, you know, are so severe." So that's what they did. Fortunately, my son got the treatment. He was in the hospital for many days, but it wasn't because Durham was prepared to help him. Our hospital beds, you're looking at 388 beds at Regional and 1,062 at Duke University. And right now, the metro population for 2025, they're looking at 444,000. Now, still getting back to the beds, that has been a problem too, because I had to be seen by a wake med at their emergency thing, because again, they could not see me. They were too full at the emergency, and they wouldn't have had a bed to put me in either. So, you know, they're constantly juggling beds to get people in, and sometimes people leave that I wonder, okay, was that just a bed situation? Okay. So the school numbers, one of the key things there is, they're only $123 per student. And you can look at the chart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have James Stewart.
Good afternoon. My name is James Stewart, and I live on Highway 70, 383 Highway 70. And we have, our family owns a parcel of land. If you recall the layout of the map, there was a L-shaped 30-acre plot that was not included in the development, and that is our land. We have been there for almost three-quarters of a century. I grew up there. My father, mother, and sister grew up there as well, and my children have grown up there too with my wife. While we realize that the surrounding area is being developed, we have not asked to be part of the annexation. We're quite happy being part of the county at this point in time. And we do have, however, a few concerns about the proposed development and how it will affect us. Currently, we are landlocked, and we have access to Highway 70 through an easement that goes through the other property. I understand that is going to be discontinued when DOT expands Highway 70. But we, of course, need access to get in and out of our property where we live. One area of concern would be about who would bear the cost of providing that access. One of the maps shows that our property would be bisected by a road. I'm not in favor of that. We're very not in favor of that. And we do not want to see our property divided like that. We would like to be able to offer alternatives for the road that goes around our property. While the surrounding property is being developed, we understand that there are some buffer zones, and we would like to have a buffer zone around our 30 acres so that development is not right up to where we are. I understand some of the other landowners have that as something that they have. I think the housing development not too far has somewhat of a buffer zone. The previous people mentioned about a...
There are two minutes left.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance that would like to speak? Okay. State your name and your address before speaking.
My name is Tina Motley Pearson, and...
Can you bring it up?
I was going to say, my address is on file. Oh, and I did want to say, thank you so much for all your work, because I know it's like a volunteer planning commission, and so it's effort on your part. And thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. So I know you've seen the slides of triassic basin soils and muddy creeks, and allowing more developments isn't really helping.
I'm going to start.
I'm sorry. Anyway, and even using flocculants, like one of the pictures shows using flocculants, and that's not really helping either. Southeast Durham is busting at the seams. And as you've seen tonight, besides for the environmental impact, we don't have the infrastructure to support all the growth. You want to get to the next one? So, and I've heard some city council members say that Durham is like the fourth-largest city, but if we're so large, we really do have to act like it. And when you don't have proper infrastructure, the residents suffer. Do the number of accidents go up or down when you add more people to an area? Clearly, they're going up. So it's very difficult for EMS workers, firefighters, police, teachers, and it's a heavy burden regarding traffic issues. So please, somebody, pay attention to the accumulative impacts of development. You know, it's not just this, but it's this one, and this one, and this one, right? It's all of them together. And it's not just traffic, it's all kinds of infrastructure issues. And there's clearly a disconnect between the city approving developments and the families in these areas. The city needs to be served, and the county residents also need to be served. For example, the city doesn't decide these, and the city doesn't decide these things for residents. It's like a patchwork of city and county. So if there's a problem, for instance, do the police, the city police, take care of it, or does the county sheriff take care of it? So much development has happened so fast that some of the most important needs of the community have been completely ignored. And who does this in such a large, growing city? What planning department thinks this is a healthy way to grow? It's like a child growing to the size of an adult in a week without all the knowledge and wisdom gained through the years of fine-tuning. Thank you very much. Please vote now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the... Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is James Stewart, son of James Stewart, who previously spoke. I want to echo the community concerns of my family and the women who spoke previously. I grew up in South Durham, and we've seen this change over time. We've seen the growth. We appreciate the growth. However, we don't want it to grow exponentially, that it's not meeting the needs that we already face. One of the things that my father wanted to bring up was wildlife concerns, the impact that has. We haven't really heard too much about the developments and how that would affect or what plans are in place to meet the impact of the wildlife. We already have a lot of problems with displacement and then new drivers on the road, and that affects residents as well. And then another concern that we had is awareness and clarity for changes as they come. Hopefully, this would be communication more than just mailers, but more direct with residents that are in the area so that we can stay informed along the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Last time, I want to ask anyone else in the audience here that would like to speak. Is there anyone on the Zoom? Is there anyone on the virtual Zoom platform that would like to speak on this case? Would the applicant like to come forward and address any of the community concerns?
We'd be happy to, and I'll start with the... I'd like to address any that would be kind of highlighted, or we can just go in order of what we heard, and then have the consultants come up and speak in turn, if that will suit the chair's preference.
Sure. How much time do they have? 45 seconds.
Well, I think in that case, I'll defer to Earl to speak about the infrastructure and the priority of when that's expected.
Good evening, everyone. Earl Luell with Kim Lee Horn. This project, as you'll see in your package, has, I think they totaled 50 off-site roadway improvements, off-site and on-site, major transportation arteries, including ACC Boulevard, Northern Durham Parkway, and Leesville Road realignment, as well as off-site improvements at TW Alexander, site frontage on Leesville, intersection of Northern Durham Parkway on Leesville Road. So not only addressing the improvements along the frontage, but completing comprehensive transportation plan roads through the project that would otherwise not be built. And if I could just add one comment, DOT has a plan, U-5518, to construct interchanges at Briar Creek Parkway, TW Alexander, and Northern Durham Parkway, beginning construction in April of '28. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. At this time, the public hearing is now closed. We are now open for commissioner discussion and questions. None?
Vice Chair Skiers. So for the transportation, the road plan... Okay. Can you address the concerns of James Stewart and James Stewart Jr. about the road going through their property?
Yeah, again, Earl Luell and Kim Lee Horn, what we're talking about is the alignment of ACC Boulevard. The alignment that we show on our development plan was informed by plans that are developing as part of the NC DOT project. So we show those alignments on our plan to preliminary engineering standards. We do not plan to build a road across their property. We can only build it up to their property.
So that's going to limit access to the residential part of this project to, I mean, how is it? Because it's listed as one of the access points.
Not sure I'm following the question.
Access number three? So you're just going to come in and dead-end it at their property? You're going to dead-end ACC Boulevard at both ends of their property?
That's all we would be able to do. We can't condemn their property. Now... Ah, okay. Access three is stubbing out to an adjacent development, the Tonti property. That property is actually in, I guess, the last phase of development, which they're considering right now. So the idea is that it would connect via ACC Boulevard out to Tonti Parkway, Corners Parkway, and ultimately TW Alexander through the series of existing streets.
So without going through the Stewart's property, you're going to have two access points coming in like this. They're going to stop, and so your development is just going to have like...
That's where ACC Boulevard would stop. There may be interconnection of streets within the pods that connect.
Around the property.
Right. But that's where ACC Boulevard has to stop. And DOT would have to, as part of their project, if it moves forward first, they would have to provide access to the Stewart property as part of the condemnation of their access onto 70 that exists today. So they would not be landlocked.
So you're saying that they could come through with eminent domain and take and come through there?
I'm sorry, real quick. Can you put the picture up from your presentation of the site so we can see this better?
So what is likely to happen, given the timeline for NC DOT improvements, is that they would build some portion of Northern Durham Parkway and a connection to their property, because they can't not provide access unless they buy their property, and that I don't think is DOT's intent, based on preliminary conversations. If we develop first and continue ACC Boulevard across this way, we can only extend it this far. If development occurs from the east, we can only extend it up to that western property line. Does that hopefully answer your question?
So you wouldn't, so you're not going to come through the middle of their property, because clearly, they don't want that. And so it's going to stop, it will give access to their property, so they won't be cut off. But then, the residential that's going to surround their property is going to be interconnected with other smaller residential. So ACC Boulevard isn't, is going to be...
The major street in that area.
Not a boulevard.
Right. It would be, ACC Boulevard is a three-lane cross-section.
With a missing piece. Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Commissioners? Commissioner Copack? Is your mic on?
It is not, thank you. So a series of questions. First of all, I was curious about some of the affordability provisions, including the intention to have affordable units segregated out from the other parts... intention to have affordable units segregated out from the other parts of the development, and also the language around building the first 870 units with no income restriction before starting with the development of the affordable housing units. Could you clarify that for me? One, why it's distinct and separate from the rest of the development? And two, what's the reason behind this other stipulation about the 870 units?
Yes, Marie Farmer with Parker Poe. Happy to answer that. So as Jamie had explained earlier, the plan for the affordable units is for the land, the seven acres, to be reserved so that the affordable units can be developed by others. One of the entities that Jamie mentioned earlier that we had met with as we were doing our community engagement was DHIC. We have met with several entities in and around Durham that have expertise in developing affordable housing. So the idea here is to partner with someone who can build those affordable units. And the reason for the 870th CO or Certificate of Compliance is because there needs to be a mechanism by which the city can determine whether or not we've complied with this reservation requirement. So I can see, Erin can explain how that math typically works.
Sure. So, and I want to make sure to first clarify that this is not that they are going to build 870 units first. It's that the dedication of land needs to take place prior to building the, or occupying the 870th unit. It can happen at the 200th unit, at the 300th unit. Think of it like Price is Right, right? You can't go above 870 units before they have to dedicate that land. That timing mechanism, we try to put in place to make sure that the development can't build out without providing those affordable units. We don't want to get to a situation where they say, "Build, you know, 1,500 units," and then decide that they're done, and that the affordable units would have been one of those, you know, 175 of those last 200 or something along those lines. So this provides the applicant an opportunity to get some cash flow, get the project started before the affordable units are provided, but gets them done early enough in the process that we can ensure that they'll be built.
All right. Thank you for that. Next, I had some questions about kind of the environmental sensitivity of the site. I was trying to interpret if there's any tension between the requirements of the comprehensive transportation plan and the stream crossing. So if there's any more detail you can provide on that and the place step analysis. Also, I'd like to follow up with a resident question around the 100-foot buffers. I mean, it's a pretty significant site. It took me about 20 minutes to drive all the way around it, you know, 300-plus acres. I'm just curious if there's other work that can be done to meet some of those concerns around appropriately managing the site, given the streams and the other sensitivities around the environment.
Yes, so we certainly understand that the environmental concerns here from the community are important and ones that we took seriously. And so if you look at our commitments that we've split up into both of the districts, we looked at ways that we could address this through our impervious surface, through our tree coverage, and through our stormwater infrastructure. So that included increasing our tree preservation in the industrial district, limiting the amount of impervious surface that's permitted in the PDR. So we are not in a watershed protection overlay, which is an important distinction. A lot of the land that is in southeast Durham is within a watershed protection overlay, and this property is not because of its location further south near US 70. However, we understand that that's still an important consideration and concern for the community, and so we decided to make that reduction in terms of impervious surface there. We also committed to retaining for the 25-year storm in both districts and incorporated that GSI. Those were the commitments that we felt were important to address the environmental concerns, but we are unable to provide additional stream buffers, and we are also unable to address how the roads will cross over those streams. Because again, as Earl explained, those plans are DOT's plans. And so where the roads are crossing, particularly the Northern Durham Parkway, ACC Boulevard, and the Leesville Road extension, those locations have been determined by others, not us. And so we are unable to change those alignments as they relate to the streams.
I mean, building on one of those points, is the 25-year the right metric to use versus
I'm not a stormwater engineer, so I'm not remotely qualified to answer that particular question. It is 25-year storm is above the UDO minimum requirements. I can state that.
Did you have a follow-up on that?
Hopefully, I can answer whatever you have to. But I was just going to add, I'm Kelsey Westwood with Kimley Horn. Marie touched on it a little bit, but you mentioned the CTP intersecting some of those streams, and the ACC Boulevard alignment does intersect a stream as well as the connection between, of Northern Durham Parkway at the US 70 intersection, actually, right where the interchange is, there is a stream there and up on the northern piece. But as far as stream crossings go, we'll certainly try to minimize, you know, this section as much as we can, to the extent that we can with DOT and the city. And then as for the 25-year storm, the, that is above the, I know Erin said, but above the UDO minimum of 10, of the 10-year storm, so.
Because the question is, does UDO have it right? But this goes above and beyond what the UDO requirement is.
That's fair. Yes.
Got it. Okay. And then the last question I'll ask for now, and I'll pause, is around Policy 81 and the location of the open space to ensure protection of the environmentally sensitive areas. It was one of the four ways that the application doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan. And I was just curious if you can clarify and commit in a way that aligns with the, you know, the stipulations of the comprehensive plan.
Yes, so one of the things that we added as a change to our commitments, and it was in relation to feedback that we had recently received from staff, and so I don't believe that it was reflected in the staff report, but we believe as addressing Policy 81 is our commitment that in both districts, that publicly accessible open space, there will be a minimum of, as Jamie had mentioned, the 5,500 square feet of the two acres that will be contiguous. And so we believe that that does address Policy 81 as it relates to creating large and contiguous habitat areas.
And staff concur with that.
We cannot at this time because we don't know exactly where the locations are, and Policy 81 talks about them being located on the most environmentally sensitive lands. We do not have a commitment for that. So while we agree that the applicant has addressed a staff, a concern of staff, that there be at least a minimum sizing on those, on those open space commitments, we don't know exactly where those are going to be, so we cannot say that it commits to 81. It gets partway there, but doesn't get all the way there for us.
Thank you. Commissioner Wen.
A few follow-up questions on the affordable housing part. So in the section where you're talking about conveying the land fee simple, so will the land be donated free of charge to the affordable housing partner? And then it says if the offer is not accepted within whatever it is, 365 days, is given to the city, is that also free of charge, or is there a dollar amount associated with that?
That's to be determined by who the partner is. We explored several different ways that that could be provided, and it's really up to the partner that wants to, or how they're going to deliver that. We don't have a commitment in exactly how that deal would be because we don't know exactly how, who we're partnering with yet and how that would go. All of those groups expressed a desire to see the zoning in place before they'd be willing to sign on, but the intention would be to partner with somebody shortly after the zoning is approved. And then if we were not able to maintain that partnership, for example, we couldn't come to terms, then the failsafe is that we would donate it back to the city for the city to dispose of it. But it wouldn't be appropriate for us to say exactly what the dollar amount or the terms would be for either group until we understand what those obligations would be on our end.
Gotcha. I can't imagine the partner went to pay more. I think from what I've seen in past development agreements, usually when a stipulation like that is proffered, I think it's like something along the lines of a dollar, we will convey to the city the land for a dollar. I think that was a common thing I've seen. So that, you know, might be something for you to consider.
Yeah, if I could just address that, that might be appropriate, and I didn't want to interrupt you, but I think it's important. That might be appropriate in a development agreement, but with a zoning, we don't, we have to avoid something that appears to be contract zoning, like if you do this, then I will do that. And when we have terms like that that spell out exactly what that would look like from a financial standpoint, it could be considered inappropriate. And so if we were to be able to partner with either affordable housing partner or the city and come to terms on some sort of development agreement, you might see a clause like that, but it wouldn't be appropriate for a proffer here.
Gotcha. And then I don't know if I fully understood your answer to Commissioner Copac's question around the thinking behind segregating the affordable units from the rest of the development. Could you kind of walk me through how y'all came to that conclusion?
Yeah. So one of the benefits of having a site this large is that you don't often see the ability for providing affordable housing in this manner. You usually see it as a percentage of a development that's kind of baked into the rest of the PDR section, for example. Or you see, or you used to see a contribution to the city on a per-unit basis. So it's unusual to be able to have the opportunity to dedicate this type of land. But when you look at that and look at what would it take to develop a significant amount of the housing product, and in this case, it was about 10% of the density that we're requesting, that ends up being seven acres. And you want that to be in some area where if we have a partner, they have an identifiable parcel that they can look at for financing, they can understand how they're coming into. There's not the uncertainty of who will be building the rest of these units, how will we integrate. And so having a separate fee parcel that they can evaluate and run their economics against, run their performance against, just as if it was a vacant parcel that they were going out to purchase, we thought would put the project in the best situation of having a partner step up and be able to participate instead of worrying about that management. Erin?
Sure, just one other thing to add, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I'm pretty sure I'm right. If an affordable housing developer is going to go after li-tech funding, NC HFA would require that to be on a separate parcel separated from the rest of this, and that parcel would need to be identified in order to qualify for the li-tech funding.
Yeah, I guess, actually, that was one of my follow-up concerns was, I'm assuming they would go after the 9% li-tech, which could potentially compete with city and county projects that we have, which I think is one of the reasons we typically prefer to see the units integrated into the development. Besides that being an identified best practice for having a mixed-income community is not segregating out the units. So I think that was the purpose of my question there. And I think those were all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No?
So one of the concerns that was pointed out was the oversubscription of the schools in the area, and there was a contribution that was proffered for the public schools. Typically, it is, tends to be around a minimum of 500 per student, and so the proffer there actually comes out to be quite low. Is that something that the applicant has considered contributing more towards for
I couldn't hear the question at the end of that, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, just, is there a higher proffer that the applicant would give around the public schools, given the oversubscription and the level that was proffered?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I think when we calculated, it was close to $600 per pupil. And if you look at the by right of what could be built there today without any zoning, it's actually 1,300 homes, 1,314 homes on, you know, larger lots, single-family lots. And so you're generating about the same amount of students when you look at 1,750 versus 1,314. Clearly, there's a delta there, but we feel that not only the price per pupil that we're generating, but when you look at what otherwise could be done without any proffer to the Durham Public Schools, that this is appropriate.
Any additional questions, commissioners? Are we ready to move this case forward?
Chair, if I may, one more.
Yes.
There was, just questions raised about Briar Creek Trail, and there was a few different options that were proposed. Is there a scenario with this development where the trail doesn't get built?
So the three options that we have outlined for the Briar Creek Trail, apologies, I'm trying to locate it. So we have, the first one is to construct and dedicate it, the second one is to dedicate the easement, and then the third one is to construct 10-foot privately maintained facility. So it would be option number two with just an easement would be an option in which the developer would not necessarily be building the greenway. The city would then, with that easement in place, potentially make that connection. The reason why that we've crafted this language in this way is if you, and I can actually pull up here where that, oh, the hidden slides are gone. So I cannot, I will just go back to here. So the trail actually runs from approximately this location across this way. So as you can see, it basically follows this stream feature here and addresses or touches some of these other water features onsite. And so at this time, until we dive into the site plan and have more of those plans in place, we're simply unable to determine exactly which path we can, we can move forward with.
So you don't know which path the trail will take?
The trail will always be in the same location, but we do not know, out of those three options in commitment number 12 on the development plan, the dedication of a 10-foot greenway easement with the construction, the dedication of a 30-foot wide easement, or then in lieu of the greenway easement, constructing a 10-foot multi-path, multi-use path, that will be determined at site plan once we've done further site evaluation and developed.
I mean, do we have a sense of which one the community prefers? And is there a reason why you can't commit to that one now? Is that something I can ask the community residents? Or have you heard this from residents about if they have a preference of those three options?
I don't, I don't want to speak for you guys, but I think, I know you didn't want the connection to the trail to Carolina Arbors or into any of the neighborhoods over there. Is that correct? But anyway...
I'm sorry, you are, the public hearing is closed, so this is questions to the applicant, not to the community. I'm sorry.
But we do show, so we show the start and end points as far as where it enters our property, and then the reason, as Marie mentioned, that we can't quite detail exactly where we're going to go is there's, obviously, we're trying to make sure we avoid streams, there's certainly a lot of topography, and then we don't know the exact layout of, you know, what's going to be in the PDR district or the IL district. So we're trying to leave some flexibility. So that's the reason for if we are able to build the trail and get the permits to do that, we certainly will, and we can, we can make sure it's that 10-foot easement. But if we are unable to build the trail, then that's why we have a 30-foot easement in case the city could build it, and then we'd allow additional room for grading to handle some of those challenges.
Are we ready to move this case forward? May I have a motion to move this case forward, please?
Chair, as it relates to case Z240024 Durham Gateway at Briar Creek, I move that we send this case forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
There are second?
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Copac and seconded by Vice Chair Shigeris to move case Z240024 Durham Gateway at Briar Creek forward with a favorable recommendation to city council. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeris.
No.
Commissioner Capers.
No.
Commissioner Chakowsky.
No.
Commissioner Hawn.
No.
Commissioner Copac.
No.
Commissioner Mackiver.
No.
Commissioner Neinkirchner. Commissioner Woke.
No.
The motion fails eight to one. The motion fails eight to one.
Thank you. Now we move on to case number two, Z240029 Courtyards at Oak Grove. May we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Cameron, Commissioners. Andy Lester with the Planning Department. As you said, I'm going to present Z240029 Courtyards at Oak Grove. The following table summarizes the application. This site is four parcels located at 6102, 6124, and 6202 Canard Road, and 1502 Doc Nichols Road. The four parcels total 22.54 acres. The existing zoning is residential rural, and the applicant proposes to change this designation to planned development residential 2.988 in order to allow up to 67 single-family and townhouse units. It is also located in the Jordan, Falls Jordan Watershed District B overlay. As stated earlier, the existing zoning is residential rural. And the proposed zoning is planned development residential 2.988. The site is surrounded by more residential rural and PDR districts. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. It is bounded by Doc Nichols to the east and Canard Road to the south. To the right is Findell Farms, a neighborhood mixed with single-family and townhouse dwellings. To the south is Courtyards at Doc Nichols, a neighborhood of single-family and townhouse under construction. To the north is the Shaw Ridge, a single-family subdivision. Generally, to the west are large-lot, single-family residences and undeveloped lots. The property is currently designated a mixed-use residential on the place-type map and is found generally consistent with that designation. On the screen, you'll see notable commitments from the project, including native species, commitments to Durham Public Schools and the Dedicated Housing Fund, design commitments to have one baojum and full bath on the first floor of each unit, a design commitments to have a minimum of one on-grade entrance to the main entrance, amenities centers, and open space requirements. And this is a sheet from the development plan. Two access points are indicated on the development plan. One access point is located on the east on Doc Nichols Road and aligned with Atlas Drive. The second access point is located to the south on Canard Drive. Text amendment 16 requires one stubout for a public street along the western cardinal direction of the site, adjacent to parcel read 164675. The building and parking envelope does not encroach on the steep slopes, wetlands, or riparian buffers on site. A 0.6 opacity buffer is indicated around the perimeter of the site. Two neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with the Neighborhood Meeting Guidelines on March 13th, 2025, and May 22nd, 2025. One comment was received by staff in relation to this case on the Durham Rezoning Explorer. The comment supports the project with modifications. The proposal is consistent with the place-type map designation, a mixed residential neighborhood. As it provides a potential mix of accessible, single-family, and/or townhouse units, the proposal is consistent with 19 of 28 applicable comprehensive policies. And staff and the applicant are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. May we have the applicant come forward, please?
Thank you, Mr. Lester, for your presentation. Good evening, Chair Cameron, Vice Chair Shigeris, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Neil Gosh. I'm an attorney at The Morningstar Law Group at 700 West Main Street in Durham. And I'm representing the applicant for this project, which is Epcun Communities. For those of you who might not be familiar with Epcun, they are based out of Ohio, but they've had a longstanding presence here in Durham. They've been building homes here for over a decade. And their local team, well, I guess that, they're local. Mr. Juan Montez has been my primary contact with Epcun. He lives right here in Durham. In fact, he lives off of Sharon Road, maybe less than a mile from this site as the crow flies. So he's very familiar with the area. Years ago, Epcun built almost exclusively age-restricted communities. But they've since adopted, adapted their model to the needs of our community. Their product still very much caters to older buyers, but the communities are not age-restricted. Their communities in Durham are great for buyers across the range, whether they're older, first-time buyers, or starting a family. And this project will be no different in that regard, though it is on the smaller side. Just south of the proposed community, Epcun actively is building and developing and marketing the Courtyards at Oak Grove community. And I think that context is important because it helps explain their vision. The proposed development here will act kind of as like a phase two of the existing community that's currently being built. And I believe, my understanding is, you know, their work there is actually why this opportunity came to them. As I mentioned, at only 22 acres, this section is rather small for a standalone project. As you heard, there are some steep slopes and environmentally sensitive areas on the property, which Epcun is completely avoiding. Even still, we're proud to be able to offer two housing types across the 67 additional units. And based on the feedback that we received during the Oak Grove rezoning, Epcun is starting their smaller, denser product type for this community. And, you know, we're not exactly sure what the mix between the single-family homes and the townhomes will be, but we know that both will be built. I think the staff report correctly or fairly points out that there's not necessarily a commitment or guarantee that there is a mix of housing types. So I would like to add a commitment that at full build-out, there will be at least two, two housing types, townhomes and single-family, just to put some more certainty on that point. You know, we, I don't really know what the number is. So just to make that a firm commitment, we could say that there'd be a minimum of at least 10 of each, just so you know that there will be some that are built. I think we expect the full build-out of the site to be closer to the 50/50, but not, again, not exactly sure what it's going to be. So I'll just make a quick note, true to their history, Epcun has made some specific design commitments on this project, which speak to the accessibility-friendly nature of their homes. In this case, every dwelling unit will have a bedroom and full bathroom on the main floor. And every dwelling unit will have at least one on-grade entrance to the main level. This provides first-floor living without the need for stairs. Another concept Epcun is continuing in this phase is the solar conduit in every unit. They have a sales and marketing campaign to promote the adoption of solar by their buyers, which includes demonstrating solar's usefulness and application by providing it on the main amenity as a selling point. That's something that they show all their buyers, or potential buyers. And finally, I want to point out that they have committed to providing monetary contributions to DPS or Durham Public Schools and the Dedicated Housing Fund. I think both are fairly significant for projects of this size, which is a good thing. Ultimately, this is a small infill project that makes sense. As the staff report indicates, the request is consistent with the place-type map. I think it's worth noting that we did have two neighborhood meetings. Our neighbors to the immediate west were essentially the only folks who attended either of those meetings. And in between those two required meetings, we maintained an open line of communication with them. I think you heard that on the Durham Rezoning Explorer, there was one comment. It was from one of these neighbors. And, yeah, so we've maintained an open line of communication with them. It's my understanding that they are supportive of our requests. Initially, they, they expressed some concerns, primarily with connectivity. We have addressed those concerns as reflected on, in the development plan. We've added a text commitment to that effect, and they appreciated those efforts. So like our neighbors, I hope you all will be able to support the project as well. Our team is available to answer any questions you may have. And thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. We just have, I think, one group again that's going to speak. All right, whenever you all are ready.
Pam. Pam, you want to get it up for me so I don't? Thank you. I'm trying. You'll do all right. Oh. Okay, we have gateway. Okay, all right. Thank you. Yes, I'm ready. This, I'm Wanda Allen. My address is on file. I want you to take a look at this slide. It basically is stating, out of the 11 developments on Doc Nichols Road, there are eight under construction and two others are still rezoning process. Of all the developments, are considered high-density with minimum UDO requirements. Doc Nichols is, has narrowed lanes. The shoulders of the roads are not consistent, which makes it dangerous for individuals to drive, walk, and sidewalks are not consistent. There are critical concerns here with the environmental and the infrastructure. We don't need the minimum anymore. We need, we, this project shows us minimum buffers, tree production, tree preservation, and open space, allowing 70% of input surface. There is a need for this, for this development and for all applicants to go ahead and exceed the basic UDO. We don't need any more minimums. We need development that provides enhanced stream order management, retaining existing tree coverage. It's like saying that you are accepting minimum health care or you're accepting minimum for your children. Remember, every time you vote yes, you're stating that the minimum is acceptable to you and the citizens in Durham. And should not be, we should not be expecting to accept the minimum. This slide right here basically is telling you, the existing slide, existing, shows you that is not high-density. And the proposed, proposed UDO zoning is not going to be high-density. Thank you.
All right, good evening again. Pamela Andrews, Wake Forest Highway. Good evening, Commissioner, friends. We appreciate you being here tonight. The long-term sediment pollution, such as what Sound Rivers has documented in the Lit Creek watershed, can kill an entire aquatic ecosystem from the very building block of aquatic life and up. Concerningly, and despite the sensitive nature of this area, the developers have not committed to going above and beyond any of the UDO requirements for open space, sediment erosion control, or tree retention. This bare minimum approach to development is too short-sighted and will inevitably perpetuate the status quo of water quality pollution. Every single housing development that has been approved in this small sub watershed has been solely residential, car-dependent, urban sprawl with minimum affordable housing proffers, and little in the way of contributions to our schools, the greenway, and other community necessities. There are many possibilities for this parcel that would better serve the environment and surrounding communities than this proposal. Next. The degradation of Lit Creek is truly unbelievable. The sediment leaving this site will travel through small tributaries, making its way to Falls Lake in just four miles. Yes, this is a violation of the Clean Water Act of 1972, but this federal lawsuit is still moving forward nearby, but it still doesn't stop the destruction. Next. Durham County is now beginning to advertise its unveiling of the algae turf scrubber, costing millions to Durham taxpayers because development has destroyed Falls Lake. Next. Masquerading clear-cutting blasting is causing sediment pollution in our streams, wetlands, and lakes. 32% of these policies, eight out of 26, will be met at site plan, which means it's an automatic approval, an automatic consistent. 24% of the comprehensive plan policies were not met. No, we request no blasting, 100-year stormwater retention pond, provide innovative stormwater management practices that will preserve and enhance water quality. And there is a neighbor across the street who has been blasted on her north, her south, her east, and her west. Go see her, Paige. It's unbelievable. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Pam Williams, Doc Nichols Road. As has been stated previously, it has just succumbed to so many developments in the last three to five years. As you can see, several developments, we have them numbered, 1 through 11. Three of the developments have not started yet. However, eight have. NCDOT traffic has increased from 2021 to 2023 on Doc Nichols Road by 122%. Normally, they grow the traffic only 3%. My question is, how much will the traffic increase when those 32 developments that's in this area, which some of them would travel on Doc Nichols? How much would that increase Doc Nichols? Right now, just with this added development, plus existing, maybe around 11,000. What is accumulative impact analysis for this area? No one knows because it hasn't been done. Okay? New developments average annual daily traffic in Durham's Lit Creek and Briar Creek. This list was also shown on the previous one. I just want to reemphasize that Gateway and Courtyard at Oak Grove is very close to each other. These 32 sites that are under construction or that have been built out since 2023, it's going to impact this entire area for, and we don't even know how bad and everything. I want to bring to your attention that the only project funded in this area, issue 5518 is what was talked about on the previous. But I also want you to know that in 2018, this project was funded, okay? It's now funded for 2028. That doesn't mean it's going to occur in 2028. We have no, no transportation improvement projects out in this area. And we beg of you to talk to your, your people and everyone to push it. Wake Forest, why are they looking at a toll road? It's because the mayor is pushing it. The Planning Department is pushing something to be done on US 1.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Tammy Suela, Baptist Road. I'm going to, again, talk about infrastructure. I've already talked, you've already heard about the response times. You've heard about the article recently of, we don't have ladder trucks in Station 8. But I want to go a little bit more into this article that was done just recently, June 5th, where the Director of Durham Emergency Services says that they've got a problem. They have, they have a crisis. He said that they're going to have a record number of 911 calls this year, like 60,000. In the budget, there is 12 new roles, six paramedics, and six emergency. But it's still not going to service all the growth in southeast Durham. This, this courtyard will contribute to 152 more people already on the very dense, you know, road, Doc Nichols with 11 developments. In this article, he also said that, and remember, this is June 5th. He said, "Last week, we had to hold 35 calls on the day shift because they didn't have EMS to respond." So 5% to 7% of 911 calls are held, EMS holds it because they don't have the capacity to respond. You're having a heart attack, you call 911, and then they have to hold. And I will tell you personally, last year, my daughter had her first seizure. My son was there, calling 911, couldn't get an answer. And, and, I mean, he's never seen her have a seizure before. So I've lived it, and you could live it. We got to take care and think about our infrastructure and take care of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I was. I thought I went down.
Do you need to go the opposite way? It's funny, I didn't.
Oh, there it is. Excuse me. Good afternoon, I'm Donna Stenbeck. And I spoke earlier on the medical situation and the EMS, the emergency rooms, and the rooms available, and the technology. I would like to go to the next slide and address a little bit about what's going on with the school systems. Okay, across the top on this chart, you can see the, or spreadsheet, is 556 for the Spring Valley capacity, and the middle school capacity, and the Southern capacity. We, the next line deals with the enrollment as of September 24. And then we took like seven samples of developments of the 32 that Pam showed you. And that's only 22% of the approved developments. And came up with 1,353 students for the elementary, 1,011 for the middle school, Neil, and 1,763 for Southern. This percent capacity at the bottom shows, just with these seven developments, that we're at 243.9% over, well, of capacity, or 124.8%, or 114.5%. The proffer for this particular project was. The proffer for this particular project was 875 per student. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tina Motley Pearson. I'm on Olive Branch Road. Let me get the right slide here. Okay. So let me first of all echo the minimum environmental protections for this project. And again, you know, we have Triassic Basin soils in this area, and it's difficult to build in this area without negative impacts because the soils are exceptionally erosive, which is why we should really be conscientious regarding how much development should be permitted in the water supply watershed of Falls Lake. Again, we don't have the infrastructure to support all this growth. I cannot stress this enough. Permitting more development doesn't fix the problems with the lack of infrastructure. The disconnect between city and county needs to be addressed. The right hand does not know what the left hand is doing. EMS services, police, firefighters, overcrowded schools, traffic issues, these issues need to be addressed before we just keep permitting more development. Developers want their projects pushed through. That's understandable, but they don't live in this area. Please take the accumulative impacts of all this development into account and vote now on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance that would like to speak on this case? Is there anyone on the Zoom that would like to speak on this case? Please raise your hand. At this time, the public hearing is now closed. We are now open for commissioner discussion and questions. Vice Chair Shigeris.
I have a question for the applicant. Based on the already existing project next to this one, can you tell us if blasting is going to be a lot necessary?
Oh. It's a good question. I don't know the answer to it.
Was blasting required for the?
No, I don't know. That's what I'm saying. I don't know, actually, if blasting was required for the Oak Grove community. I don't know.
Okay, thank you. A follow-up. If blasting is required, what measures is the, as applicant, are you guys taking to ensure the safety of the surrounding houses if they're damaged?
Yeah, I mean, I, blasting is a highly regulated activity that requires permit and separate approval at the county level. I don't know specific. I know they have to do pre-blast inspections. They have to offer the post-blast inspections as well and notification. Beyond that, I don't really know what, if, I mean, there's no specific plan to blast at this location, so I can't really answer the question with any specifics.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Did you want to, I'm sorry, and I should have allowed you to respond to any of the community concerns before I closed the public hearing. Did you want to?
Sure, I'm happy to respond. You know, I think a few folks mentioned that, you know, we don't need high-density housing in this area, and, you know, I wouldn't describe 2.988 density as high density. The, there was a lot of focus also, I think, on whether this project is committing to something beyond the UDO requirements. You know, just a couple of things I wanted to point out. We actually are committing to, over what is required in the UDO for tree cover because in this case specifically, we're committing to tree preservation rather than replanting. Obviously, the UDO requires both. Now, so the amount of trees, we're not necessarily over, but we are committing to tree preservation. You know, at 67 units, this project isn't producing a ton of traffic, but I do recognize that there is a lot of development going on in the area. And so, so I can understand the traffic concerns. That having been said, I think focusing on NCDOT project that was funded previously, is funded for some other time is kind of inaccurate in, because if you, if you drove through that area today, you'll see there's a lot of construction going on. There are a lot of road improvements in that area, actually. That's not necessarily NCDOT doing them, but to suggest that there have been no improvements in the road network is flat-out false. That's, that's a lot of what these developments are doing, is providing improvements to the road network. There was some mention about the hospitals. I mean, I don't know if you all have been following the news. Recently, there was a settlement between Duke and UNC. There is a new hospital that is planned in Duke off of T.W. Alexander or some, something like that, 102-bedroom hospital. So, you know, I don't think that this development or any residential development is necessarily responsible for or can answer to the needs of the hospital, but I think those points are well-taken, and I think that the health service, health providers kind of agree with that, and that's in fact why they are investing in a new hospital in Durham. And then you probably also heard there is also going to be a children's hospital that is going to be built jointly between Duke and UNC. I don't exactly know where that is. I'm not sure if that's been reported. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, our contact here, Juan Montes, he lives in Durham. He lives off Sharon Road. He lives right over in this location. He's very familiar with what's going on in this area. There is a lot of development, but that, one thing that cannot be overstated here is that this project matches the place type map. It matches the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan was adopted recently in October 2023. This project fits that view, right? So this is a good project per the comprehensive plan, and it is a small infill project. I think a lot of the concerns that there, that were raised by some of the same speakers for the Gateway project might make sense in the context of a large development like this. This is 67 units, an infill site adjacent to an area where they're already building. It's not the same thing. It's not apples-to-apples at all. Anyway, that, that, those are my responses to what I heard from, from the neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Are we ready to move this project forward? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the tree preservation, but I do think it's worth noting that these are opportunities to go beyond the minimums and the comprehensive plan call for these sorts of projects to go beyond the minimum for open space and for trees. Also to have, you know, public access to open space. And, you know, there's other areas that, that stand out, like, you know, policy 165, like the we should avoid creating donut holes. You talk about infill and it being connected to these other developments, but according to the, the application review, you know, it, it is kind of disconnected, disjointed from other, you know, other city properties at this time. So I don't think, those are other things that are worth noting. Also, we, we've seen, you know, plenty of projects come through this body as well that, you know, are of this size and still manage to dedicate actual affordable units. I appreciate the, the, the contribution to the dedicated housing fund, but, you know, this starts to get at a scale where we've seen projects come in with, with, with affordable housing units integrated into the project rather than just the, the contribution. But I think you've already addressed the question about the minimum open space and trees. I wonder about the public access and also about the, the donut hole. If you have any thoughts on those.
Yeah, so I would disagree with the characterization on the donut hole. This is a, this is not a satellite annexation. It's contiguous to the city limits. There is a parcel to our southwest, and we've talked to that property owner. That parcel actually exists on both sides of the Canard right-of-way. So it's not just, I don't know if there's, if I can pull the map up. Well, there, there is a parcel to our southwest. It goes across Canard right-of-way. So that parcel is not, it, it may look like two parcels. It is one parcel. And we've talked to that person. That may be the donut hole that the staff review refers to, but keep in mind, this whole area is a donut hole. If anything, this annexation request makes the donut hole smaller, not larger. It's not creating a donut hole. It's, it's making an existing donut hole smaller. So I don't, I don't really agree with that characterization. As far as the public access goes, public access to open space, the, you know, the, the site is going to have public roads around it. They will have sidewalk that's actually 10-foot multi-use path. That's actually a commitment on there. Those are all within the public right-of-way. The open space is ultimately maintained by the HOA for the development. Those aren't public open spaces, and frankly, they're not going to be like a park-like setting. I mean, these are on the fringes of the development, right? And there, there are some environmentally sensitive areas in there. That's a lot of where the open space is going to end up, which is consistent with other policies in the comprehensive plan. It's where a lot of the tree save is, where a lot of the open space is concentrated in environmentally sensitive areas. That they are not publicly accessible, I think, is just reflective of the fact that that's how development occurs in America. It's an HOA development. The HOA owns and maintains and unfortunately is liable for whatever happens on those. They're not public. I mean, I don't, that's how all developments work.
Staff, have any comment on the, the policy 165 and the donut hole?
Thank you for the question. That is referring to the parcel that is southwest or southeast of Doc Nichols. I think that was identified as that remnant parcel would, you know, the remnant parcel would be a donut hole or a satellite, basically. I think that's what that was referencing in policy 165, is that you have that remnant that's isolated from everything.
Yeah. I mean, this development's at the corner of the, there is a parcel to our southeast.
Yeah, across Doc Nichols.
How are we making that donut? I, I will still disagree with the characterization, although I did talk to that guy. He's actually related to the owners. He does not want to be annexed.
Yeah, it's the. To the right.
I see. You're talking about that kind of, I don't know what to call that.
Yeah.
Part of a circle.
That's, that is what 165 is referring to.
Across Doc Nichols.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. We did talk to that guy. That guy is related to the sellers here and specifically does not want to be annexed. In fact, he called me up to yell at me because he thought I was annexing him, so.
If you'd like to provide us information with that, we can reference that in the city memo.
Sure. I can, I can send you the email.
Thank you.
Whoa. That was cool. That was, that was pretty. I like that.
Are there any other commissioner questions? Going once, going twice? Yes.
Does your proposed development include blasting?
I don't know the answer to that question at the time. We haven't done any subsurface analysis to know whether blasting will be required here. I mean, that will come at a later stage.
Okay. We've had problems with that as far as other developers go. We don't have the infrastructure to support enforcing those things. When a company does or a developer does blast, there are, like you said, safeguards for that, but they don't follow those safeguards and there's not enough infrastructure or enforcement of the, of the UDOs to, to oversee it. So that's my concern about any of that. And you don't know if there will be blasting, so that's another concern that I have.
Yeah, I would say generally speaking, at the rezoning stage, most folks aren't going to know whether blasting is required because of the, of the sequence of development. They just haven't done subsurface evaluation to know if they are having, you know, if the auger is hitting rock at two feet or 15 feet or whatever. So that makes it difficult to know at this stage whether there would be blasting associated with it.
Are there any other questions? Are we ready to move this case forward? If so, may I please have a motion?
Chair, as it relates to case Z240029, courtyards at Oak Grove, I move that we send this case forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Copac and seconded by Vice Chair Shigeris to move case Z240029, courtyards at Oak Grove forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeris.
Yes.
Commissioner Capers.
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan.
Yes.
Commissioner Copac.
Yes.
Commissioner McIver.
Yes.
Commissioner Neinkirchner.
No.
Commissioner Woke.
No.
The motion passes seven to two.
Thank you. We have about 10 minutes before we need a break. Take a break? Keep going? Okay. All right. Next case is Z240044 Fayetteville Flats. May we have the staff report, please?
All right. Good evening, Chair Cameron, Vice Chair Shigeris, and planning commissioners. My name is Peyton Burgess, and I am here tonight to present Z240044 Fayetteville Flats. The request is for 9.77 acres located at 3707 Fayetteville Street to rezone from residential urban 5 to planned development residential 22.449 to allow for an income-restricted multifamily apartment development of up to 220 units. Again, the existing zoning is residential urban 5, and the request proposes planned development residential 22.449. The aerial match is the general location of the project. To the southeast of the site is Hillside High School. The property is currently designated apartment and townhouse neighborhood on the place type map. The proposed zoning was determined consistent with the designated place type. The applicant has included the following text commitments, such as a maximum building height of 70 feet, a maximum impervious surface coverage of 70%, all units to be on average affordable at 60% AMI for 30 years, native plantings, all apartment buildings are required to meet the Energy Star Multifamily New Construction Program certification requirements, a concrete pad and bus shelter per Go Durham standards, a donation to Durham Public Schools, and a 10-foot-wide concrete shared path along the site frontage, along with site driveway improvements. Neighborhood meetings were held on December 19th and May 22nd. 20 community members. 20 community members attended the first and eight attended the second. There have been no comments received on Durham Rezoning Explorer in relation to this case. The proposal is consistent with the place type map designation of Apartment and Townhouse Neighborhood and it is consistent with 19 of 20 comprehensive plan policies. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. May we have the applicant, please?
Thank you, Ms. Burgess, for your presentation. Once again, good evening, everyone. I'm Neil Goesh, an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group. And I'm representing the applicant for this project, which is the Elmington Capital Group. This project is very near and dear to my heart. I grew up in this section of Durham and I still live in the area today. I could, I could walk to this site from my house, in fact, using sidewalks and the American Tobacco Trail. So this is a pretty well-connected, walkable site. Aside from all that, this is an affordable housing project. My clients intend to utilize a low-income housing tax credit program to deliver a high-quality multifamily development on the site. This will be up to 220 apartment units across multiple buildings on just under 10 acres of land. And it's adjacent to the Hillside High School. The proposed project is consistent with the place type map, which calls for apartments or townhomes on this site. It's an infill development conveniently located between two stops of an active, existing transit route. Frankly, I probably couldn't draw it up better in a book if I wanted to. They have made some really strong commitments and wise decisions to bring the project into further conformance with the complaint. I believe the staff report indicates that the project is consistent with 19 out of 20 applicable policies. And that's because they have made commitments like limiting the amount of impervious surface coverage, using native plants and green building techniques, and further supporting the expansion of transit. Also, they were wise in choosing to invest in this location, which is walkable and is located near transit, schools and institutional uses, public parks, the ATT, Greenway, some commercial uses and more. This is a very strong project. And the cherry on top is that they believe they can deliver this project without any subsidy from the city or county. Now, don't get me wrong. If it's available, they will gladly take it. But they have come to the project eyes wide open, understanding that the city and county do not and might not currently have funding available for these types of projects. Frankly, I want to find these guys more sites to do in Durham because I believe we would be in a much better position as a city if this were the type of development being proposed regularly. I recognize that sentiment probably departs from reality. But it's a nice thought and I'm very proud of this project and I hope to have your support tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone, no one signed up from the community to speak? Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Is there anyone on the Zoom that would like to speak to this case? Going once, going twice? All right, we are, I'm closing the public hearing now and we are open for Commissioner discussion and questions. Commissioner Woke.
Hi, I appreciate this project very much and that all but one comprehensive plan policy is met. However, that one, I would love to see that one. Looking at the map, right, this is an oasis of green in a very urban area. And so the one that's not met is the tree coverage beyond the UDO. And it would be nice to see just, just, you know, just as we were talking about earlier this evening in how to do better, to, you know, do things in excess of the UDO. It would be really exciting to see such a great project meet every comprehensive plan policy.
It's not on? Commissioner Kopac.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, just to reinforce that point. And we've had other applicants come forward and they're like, oh, yeah, when we develop these things, we just look at the minimum. We put that down even if we intend to do more. And to be able to get that policy just to do an extra percent or two, maybe you're saying it's impossible. But often it is possible. But we find that, that developers will just sort of put that down because it's what's listed in the UDO. So it would be great if there was a way to commit to go just beyond that and hit all 20. Otherwise, I agree with you. You couldn't draw it up any better. Even the fact that there's the, the commitment to the Energy Star Multifamily. We don't often talk enough about energy affordability, but the fact that that's built in as well as the, the commitment to serving a lower AMI is just excellent. So just would love your thoughts on the, you know, on the minimums. And then the other question I would ask is, there was, there was one statement about rental fees that would still keep it below 80% AMI. I'm not used to seeing that in applications when we're talking about serving a certain AMI. And maybe it's the case that that's always there and it's just not named transparently. But I'm curious about these fees and how they come into play. Yeah, the minimums and the fees are my questions. Otherwise, it's fabulous.
So, you know, I, I'm not a newcomer to development here in Durham. I have, I advise all my clients to strive for more tree coverage. These, these folks have been great to work with. The problem is on this site, I think it's a little bit challenging for them to make the commitment based on where they are. They're, I don't disagree with the point you're making. Ultimately, there, there may be more than 20% tree coverage on the site. However, it's difficult for them to make that as a zoning commitment at this point because they just don't have that fine level of engineering or detail yet to be able to say for sure they're going to hit 21% or 22%. So it's not the case that they just put the minimum down because that's what's required. They're looking at it and it's too close for them to feel comfortable to make that type of commitment. With respect to the rental fees, so the condition that is outlined here, I actually don't know when the, the definition changed in the UDO for affordable housing. But it actually, this is, this describes affordable housing for rental units under the, under both the, I believe, the current definition in the UDO for affordable housing. But also, more importantly, what the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, this is, this describes the Lytech program, right? So on average, all of the rents are, so if you took, if you've got 100 units and you just, on average, all of those 100 units are affordable at the 60% AMI level. That does not mean that each unit is affordable at 60% AMI. What it means is that some of them might be at 60, some of them might be at 30, some of them might be at 80. But you can't go above 80 and count it as part of your program, right? That's what this definition or our condition reflects is first, I mean, most importantly, the 4% Lytech scheme from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. That's what we're mimicking there, right? And the UDO definition didn't always incorporate that, but it now does, I noticed.
It, so it does not incorporate that. The UD, so the difference here is that Lytech allows for that income averaging.
Okay.
The UDO and its definition of affordable would require that all units be affordable to 60% AMI or less. There's no averaging allowed under the UDO definition currently. We have discussed changing that in the new UDO.
Okay.
Allow that averaging. But that's not the way the UDO is written currently. And so that's why Peyton used the term income restricted rather than affordable because it doesn't meet the UDO's definition of affordable. It does meet the Lytech definition.
Yeah. Yeah, I, okay, I must have read the new draft and maybe that's what I was looking at. But, okay, my mistake. Current UDO does not allow for income averaging. But that is what the, that's what a Lytech program allows for generally, so yeah.
Any other questions? No. Are we ready to move this case forward?
Chair, as it relates to Case Z240044 Fayetteville Flats, I move that we send this case forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Kopac and seconded by Vice Chair Shigeris to move Case Z240044 Fayetteville Flats forward with a favorable recommendation to City Council. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeris.
Yes.
Commissioner Capers.
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan.
Yes.
Commissioner Kopac.
Yes.
Commissioner McIver.
Yes.
Commissioner Neinkirchner.
Yes.
Commissioner Woke.
Yes.
The motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. We don't have any committee updates, new business? Do we want to take care of July underneath?
Sure, we can do that. I did send this in an email, but just to confirm, since the rules of procedure give this power to the chair, it is staff's recommendation to cancel the July meeting. We do not have any cases that are ready for you. Be aware that we are looking at six to seven cases on the August agenda. But this does allow you to take July off. And so we thought that was a fair compromise. So Chair Cameron, if you could make the announcement.
Sure, I am announcing that the July 2025 Planning Commission meeting that would normally be held on July 8th is canceled. We will see everyone in August. Are there any other staff announcements?
Only that we do have two new commissioners that have been appointed by the City Council and their terms will start July 1st. So you will hopefully see them at the August meeting.
You can. All right, being no other business to come before this body, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.